So I will officially call the July 12th, 2021 Board of Selectmen meeting to order. And Wendy, do you need some pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wendy? Right. First over our business this evening, we have the public hearing on a proposed common of us advantage of the code of ordinances. References changing the first selectman references to the town manager were appropriate. So go ahead and open that public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on the ordinances?
No, I think you've done a fine job. I listen to the tape.
For the record, Ms. Coe thinks you've done a fine job. We're off to a good start already, Sergeant Eric. We uh, we miss you very much, but we're off to a good start this evening. All right. Anyone in the hallway? There's no one else. Right. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing at that code of ordinances?
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Is there any other discussion? That was Jackie and Wendy seconded.
Sorry.
That's okay. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. That motion carries four oh. The public hearing is closed. All right. We will move right on to public audience. Let's go.
John Coe, 26 with Converry. I'm concerned that management of the police department under the leadership of Chief Boulter has led to a toxic work environment. Both the Board of Selectmen and the Police Commission have ignored the failures of management, although there have been investigations leading to no accountability. The police union voted overwhelmingly in no confidence in Chief Boulter's management in 2019, soon after Sergeant Trumbull was fired after adhering to spreading malicious gossip against Chief Boulter. Chief Boulter allegedly was heard stating that he was unhappy with the performance of some officers and wished that they would leave the department. Although Chief Boulter refused to admit to that conversation, he fired Sergeant Trumbull for being untruthful. Chief Boulter was concerned that Sergeant Trumbull caged his conversation, although it was unfounded. During the Trumbull hearing, Chief Boulter stated that being untruthful is just cause for termination. Town Manager Maria Capriola stated that she has full confidence in Chief Boulter. On October 25th, 2019, Ed Kuzinski, IBPO National Representative, sent an email to Town Manager Maria Capriola with the subject "An Internal Affairs Investigation/Complaints," stating, quote, "I am writing to you on behalf of the IBPO Local 458. It is our stance that during the termination hearing of Sergeant Trumbull, Chief Boulter was untruthful in his testimony, which he provided under oath and penalty of perjury. Consider this a formal complaint regarding the untruthfulness and morassity regarding Chief Police Nicholas Boulter. We contend that during his testimony on 10/15/19, the chief was asked specific questions regarding offending grievance filed by Sergeant Trumbull. Within that sworn testimony, Chief Boulter answered a question posed by counsel that directly contradicts a memorandum that Chief Boulter sent to local union president Gary Gray on May 17, 2010. Our position is that Chief Boulter is holding Sergeant Trumbull accountable for perceived acts of untruthfulness. However, we have evidence to show that Chief Boulter intentionally and willfully was untruthful in his sworn testimony or intentionally and willfully in his memorandum to local union president Gary Gray. Further, our position is that Chief Boulter violated Simsbury Police Department General Order 26-3 standards of conduct as it relates to the truthfulness and conduct of becoming an officer. Accordingly, we demand that an internal investigation, affairs investigation into the conduct of Chief Boulter be conducted under General Order 52-1. As such, we further request under General Orders 52-1, Section D6, that this investigation be conducted by an outside agency," end quote. Further, this general order, please acknowledge this formal complaint with five business within five business days. Sincerely, Edward Kuzinski, Jr., IBPO National Representative. As Town Manager Maria Capriola will build this request in a timely manner, I have a pending FOI request for the response. Recently, Chief Boulter promoted two officers, one to the rank of sergeant and the other to lieutenant. It is alleged that these were politically motivated choices. The sergeant's exam had several officers that had better scores on the rhythm exam, and one officer should have been given credit for longevity and experience within the department. The failure, this failure of leadership has led to poor morale among the officers with a politically motivated choice that does not incentivize other officers from coming forward. I recently received a letter from people concerned about the mismanagement of the assessors office. These allegations were sent to the Board of Selectmen Town Manager Maria Capriola on June 10th, 2021, that was not read into the record on June 14th meeting. The letter states, quote, "We need to remain anonymous to avoid direct impact to our business in Simsbury and prevent retaliation from the elected officials, such as those who serve in the Board of Selectmen and Town Hall. Unfortunately, we have been advised of the vindictive instincts of those running out of town, and we're concerned that someone could retaliate directly or indirectly, could disclose those behind concerns expressed in this letter. Hence, why our names were left out. Practices and policies of this administration are unethical, untethered to truth, and will be, and will use all of the resources in our town to push their agenda and control the narrative," end quote. Since the letters are lengthy, I have added a link for review, and the link is on my uh, on my statement. The town has received approval to purchase Meadowwood land for open space. The four barns of Byattown Road, as the picture shows, are in disrepair, covered in top acreage with overgrowth of vegetation, and should be demolished prior to the sale. The town's position is that the bond will be evaluated for structural stability as part of the purchase sale agreement. After, as the agreement afterwards. And the costs associated with repair, restoration, or demolition, demolition will be at the taxpayers' expense. Why are the taxpayers assuming the cost? And all of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter, John Coe, and Facebook. And this is the uh, the four barns that are on Byattown Road. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Joan. All right, no other public audience. Uh, we'll move right on to the first selectmen's report. Uh, I'll be very brief, as I'm not the first selectman, I'm the deputy. But I, I just want to thank Melissa and Tom Roy and the rest of staff from last week. While they were relatively uh, small outages that were powerages in town as a result of several storms. Great job communicating, sharing information, keeping us and the public informed when that service would be restored. Um, and I just appreciate that communication very much, because I know, you know, we get a lot of phone calls, we get a lot of emails, questions, a lot on social media about what's going on, roads down, and it's, uh, once again, just a chance, I think for Tom Roy's crew in particular, to shine as they work with the police department, get out there well before anyone else does, make sure the roads are safe, make sure our residents are taken care of. And then I do applaud Resources Restoration at first. They, I thought they did a nice job um, of, of working with the local crews to make sure that the power came back on. Uh, we are continuing.
Multiple times.
Yes, multiple times. We are still trying to figure out what exactly is going on with Comcast. I know that there's been continued outages reported usually in the evening in sporadic places in town. Uh, we do know that was the great, you know, uh, internet outage of 2021 that we all survived. Um, but uh, I think we, we need to continue to make sure that we're, that we're staying connected with the Comcast folks. And I think we'll be taking that up in public safety. That is the extent of my report for this evening, so we'll provide to Maria. Welcome back.
Thank you. Thanks. And so a quick update on vaccination status in our community. Um, as of July 7th, the state is reporting that we have just over 18,000 residents who have received at least their first dose of the vaccine. Uh, that's just under 72% of our population, while about 67% of our residents are now fully vaccinated. Uh, when you look at that by age group, uh, about 50, just about 51% of our children ages 12 to 15 are fully vaccinated. Uh, folks in the age group of 16 to 44, uh, almost 86% are now fully vaccinated. Uh, age group 45 to 64, 76% are fully vaccinated. And as we've previously reported, nearly 100% of those age 65 and, and over are fully vaccinated. So I think those are very encouraging numbers for our community. Um, we also haven't had any reported cases now in town for eight consecutive weeks. Um, so definitely, I think that, you know, those high vaccination numbers that we're seeing are certainly helping with that. Uh, just in regards to face coverings, um, many of you may have seen the announcement that right after the Fourth of July, we were no longer asking fully vaccinated individuals to wear face coverings at Town Hall or Eno. Um, beginning this Wednesday, um, we will also no longer be asking library patrons um, who are fully vaccinated to wear a face covering. Um, you may recall, we had been asking folks to hold up just a little longer here, um, because during the summertime in particular, we do receive many children who are visitors, many of whom can't be vaccinated. So again, we were just waiting a little bit longer to see our vaccination numbers get up, make sure that we weren't seeing, you know, community transmission cases. Um, but with the statistics looking so good, again, as of Wednesday, we won't be asking patrons at the library who are vaccinated to, to wear a face covering. Um, a couple of items under Board of Selectmen Business, the construction inspector item. Um, we are still waiting to hear back from the union on that proposal. Um, so I would ask that we table that item to a future meeting, potentially the Thursday meeting that we're having, the special meeting, or the upcoming meeting on August 9th. And just a quick, uh, quick reminder that we do have that special meeting this Thursday at 5:30 PM that will be held here, um, in the library program room. Um, the purpose of that is for us to hold the public hearing on releasing the conservation easements from the Meadowwood subdivision, but then accepting the new conservation easements associated with our acquisition of the property. Um, we'll also have Meadowwood Purchase and Sale Agreement on that agenda as well. And a couple of quick notes from our library. I want to congratulate Sue Mazurski on her second retirement with the town. We were so fortunate, and a few years ago, Sue rejoined our team, and she had been supporting Lisa Creamer, our library director. She is just such a talented and wonderful individual. Um, she says she's retired for, for good this time, although she's still, she's still helping settle a little bit with training, shaping her, her replacement. But again, really just want to wish Sue well and think of her, her job well done. Um, but also want to congratulate, um, Jamie Nicholson. Um, she has been promoted to that library service, actually to the library admin secretary position. Um, was previously a library services assistant. Um, and really has phenomenal technology skills and teamwork. Um, is just a really thoughtful individual, and want to congratulate Jamie on her new role. So congratulations to Jamie. And a few items regarding the annual book sale. Um, the Simsbury Public, the Friends of the Simsbury Public Library are collecting donations for the annual book sale. Um, it's going to be held on September 25th and 26th at the Simsbury High School. Um, we are accepting donations at the lower level of the library. Uh, let me just make sure I read this right. Tuesdays and Fridays from 10 AM to noon, and Saturdays from 10 AM to 2 PM. Uh, we'll accept items such as books, games, puzzles, TVs, and TVs that are in good condition. And we ask people to please don't bring records, magazines, encyclopedias, textbooks, or other materials that are generally in poor condition. Um, and that is, is a great event, um, and the funds raised directly support our library programs and services. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else have any community updates they want to bring up? I know we usually bring those up in liaison on the force, but there's anything anybody else to mention now?
Yeah, I would love to. If that's okay. Well, I was gonna look at the, I watched some of the open space meeting, and um, I really wanted to get some information. Melissa had given some on the barn that fell down. If we could get, um, you know, when that was, the, the permit was done, when that happened, um, what happened to the wood, and if it impacts the Meadowwood purchase at all.
Sure. Um, just a bit of information I can share, and then if there's additional information, we can certainly have our building official, Henry, write up some additional information. Um, but that particular building, um, was becoming in imminent danger of collapsing. And so, uh, the current owner of the property did apply for a permit to essentially demolish the property. Um, the building official did feel that was the, the safest and most appropriate course of action. Um, so that particular barn was demolished at the owner's expense. Um, you may recall, I believe it was December of 2020, so just this past December, um, we did do a brief report to Board of Selectmen about the barns. Um, there are about a dozen barns total on the entire property, and, and some of them, from Henry's initial assessment, were deemed that they would most likely need to, to come, come down. So, um, this is one of those barns that was just really beyond the point of being able to repair or rehab that. Um, so it won't affect the acquisition. It's essentially just, um, one less barn that will have to use our, um, grant funds to, to either rehab or demolish when we take ownership of the property. Uh, and we may also recall that, uh, through the state, we have received a grant, as well as some additional funding through a corporation that was passed through the state. Uh, I believe it's in the neighborhood of $400,000 to $500,000 to do some rehab work to the barns on the property. So that's just a great opportunity for us.
That's an important point. Yeah, because I think folks are confused about where it comes from and how that all works. Unfortunately, that barn was affectionately called the Leener, I think is what they.
Yeah, yeah, for some time. Less important, but there were some requests for the wood, if the wood is going.
I'm sure there were.
Yeah. And I'll check on that. I know, um, in some past conversations with the property owner, we conveyed that if in fact some wood could be saved, to potentially then reuse for some of the other, you know, barns to do repair work.
That would be great.
That we would try this. I hope that they can set that aside for us, so I can certainly check on the status of that. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, that is, I can start up to my obvious enough folks to repurposing.
Yeah.
So I just have to do, yeah, so I just add that June 28th, the park was still open for that.
Okay. Thanks, Melissa. Perfect. All right. Any other community updates or?
Um, are we not gonna do it at the end?
No, liaison reports we can do at the end.
Okay.
This was just more of the community. I like to throw her balls.
Yeah, I like it. I like doing that now.
This is my big shot after 10 years. There's no limit with it. All right. We'll move right into, uh, selectmen action. We've got the Dial-A-Ride vehicle grant. Most of us, and we've all done, at least in the past, um, the system applied for the grant, uh, through our CONDOT, uh, where we'll get an 80% uh, match, um, and then 20% comes from the Dollar Ride Funding Collection Program. This was an approved item in the CNR plan for the prior budget. Um, so we're just, uh, going ahead and authorizing, uh, to submit the grant and then for Maria to go ahead and execute all documents.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So the other Dial-A-Ride van, the 2014, hi Kristen.
Hi Kristen.
Was that already applied for in, when we did our budget?
Yes, yeah. So that's a good memory. So we did just do, uh, we have two buses, and we had an application for up to school 2021, so just this past fiscal year, that was approved. And it's the same 80/20 match. So, um, that took care of one of the two vans in the fleet. And then this, uh, this particular application would take care of the second van. Um, and this was included as part of the CIP for that upcoming year, as part of the CNR plan.
I thought that was the case, just based on memory. So I wanted to check on that, that the oldest van we had already approved, but in this memo, it still had the 2014, 2016. No, no, I just wanted to make sure that we were replacing the oldest, and I thought we were.
Yeah, and right, um, there are some delays.
Yeah, cool, in terms of funding.
Exactly. It was just procurement, and, uh, so similar to a lot of, you know, folks, as they've been shopping for cars, and there have been shortages during time due to the pandemic. Similarly, um, the manufacturers are a bit behind. So although we were awarded the grant to replace the first vehicle, we still haven't actually received it, and maybe a little bit of, bit of time is over hearing from the manufacturer.
But the nice thing is.
But it's coming.
We're gonna have two new ones, new work. Excellent.
Beautiful. All right.
Thank you.
Kristen, anything to add?
Um, no, I, I'm really happy and pleased that we did receive the grant for that first van. And, um, as Maria said, it's currently being built. We've sent all of our specs to the, um, manufacturers, but we're just waiting until we have all the parts. We might not see it until the fall or maybe even the winter. Um, and then this grant would replace the next bus, and then we will be all set for four and five years, and then we'll do it again.
Excellent.
Excellent. Appreciate that.
Great.
All right, so, uh.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
If you're getting to move. So Kristen, I just want to ask on appendix, A, it shows the service routes, routes. And it has Town of Avon, Town of Canton, Town of Granby, but no, it's out of Simsbury? Like, is it just a miss on that page? Just, just trying to see where it went and. Those were in addition. Oh, it says in addition? Yeah. Okay. If I, maybe not on the appendix, but I, it was in. Okay, in the main part description. Is that right, Melissa?
Um, my best reference is our contract with Martell.
Okay.
So Kristen, you can speak to this later, but I believe that's noting where we go in other towns.
Okay, that's fine. Just looking at that.
So I'll, I'll definitely double check that that's the correct language for the grant. Um, but I believe that that was the listing of places that we go in addition to Simsbury. But thank you for bringing that out. We'll make sure.
My misunderstanding of the appendix.
No, it's all right. Government grants are anything but easy to figure out. That's, that's fair. Nice question. All right. Other questions? All right. So I would be looking for a motion effective July 12th, 2021, to approve the submission of the CONDOT 2021, Traditional Section 5310 Capital Grant Application. And further, I would look for the, a motion to accept the CONDOT, uh, 5310 Grant Award and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute all grants, uh, scheme documents related to that grant.
I'll make that motion, and thank you for your time.
All right. That's Jackie making the motion.
Wendy will second it.
Wendy is seconding. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That's, uh, four nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kristen. Thank you, Mike. It's a good lesson in how much work goes into this stuff. You know, we prove something in two minutes, but right, there's, there's 25 pages of that. And that's the folks, Kristen, Melissa, Maria, and other folks put together, so. All right. Uh, this one, this one will be an exciting one. We've got a proposed public gathering permit, uh, for the Simsbury Caucus at the Flower Bridge. Um, so this one's pretty self-explanatory, but, uh, the Republican Party would like to hold their caucus outdoors on, uh, July 24th at, uh, 10 AM, um, and utilize the Flower Bridge space. And I believe all items are in order from the public gathering permit. Is that correct?
Yes.
It is. All right. Are there any questions on this item? All right. I would be looking for a motion effective, uh, this evening to approve the public gathering application on behalf of the Simsbury Parks and Rec, and to authorize the issuance of public gathering permit with the Simsbury Republican Caucus at the Flower Bridge.
Jackie, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Michael, second it. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Uh, four in favor, nine opposed. Thank you all.
No.
That? We're scanning, we're scanning, we're scanning. We're good. All right. Uh, we are tabling. I'll need a motion to, uh, table the construction inspector job description, please. I'll move that. All right. Mike, move to table.
I'll second. Jackie?
Jackie second. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All right. Any opposed? All right. Table that for the next meeting. Thank you. All right. Uh, the Simsbury Public Schools Lighting Upgrade Loan Agreements. Maria, you want to walk us through this one?
Sure, sure. I think Amy may be on to assist with any questions as well. Um, I believe in Jason Casey from the school board. Uh, but this is very similar. You may recall, a few months back, the town had entered into some, um, agreements in order to, uh, upgrade our various, you know, lighting infrastructure. Um, and it's essentially energy efficiency improvements that will over time help to reduce, you know, our operating, um, costs. But essentially, uh, we are paying for that through the savings. Um, and that, uh, you know, Bob had taken a look at this and believed, uh, under our charter that in order to execute those documents, they would be considered phone documents, um, and that we would need the, uh, both the Board of Selectmen, as well as the Board of Finance approval prior to signing off. So this is a very similar program. Um, this would allow for lighting upgrades to our various school buildings. Um, and again, we would just want to, um, move forward with executing those, uh, those loan documents in a manner that was consistent with what we did for the town buildings. I don't know, Amy or Jason, if they have anything they, they wanted to add to that.
Yeah, that's okay.
I have nothing to add.
Thanks, Jason. Any questions from the board?
I think it's a great program, and, uh, it's good we can take advantage of.
Yeah.
I agree. These, yeah, these are the creative solutions we're looking forward to save money right now, and beyond the bill financing, so there's no capital outlets. I appreciate that much. So, uh, I'll be looking for a motion this evening to authorize the Finance Director, Amy Meriwether, to execute the agreements with EverSource for each of the three lighting upgrade projects as presented.
So moved. Wendy. Oh, Wendy. Second, Jackie.
Any further discussion on the matter? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? It's like, motion carries four nothing.
What?
You all are getting punchy, Keith.
Oh, sorry. Very intimate setting, like no one's watching. Wish we knew how many.
It's better not to know. All right. Uh, so we have a proposed memorandum of understanding with the Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance Association for the reimbursement of the radio system equipment. Steve, or, or Maria, want to go ahead and understand?
Oh, sure. So, I mean, yes, I said her idea.
And they worked extensively with the radio system, so.
So you'll probably recall, we had the, uh, radio system project that was approved through the fiscal year 21 capital budget, um, for one point, just over $1.2 million, and that covers, um, the new system for the police department, Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance Association, Board of Education radios, and, uh, Public Works radios as well. Um, so we are in progress. We are in the ready completion of that project. Um, quite tend yet, but hopefully by the end of the summer, we'll be live upgrading system. Um, and this particular agreement is in regards to the costs that were included for the ambulance association. So our bond authorization did cover the entire project, including Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance Association. So this agreement is basically an arrangement, um, that just details how they'll reimburse us for those costs. Uh, they're cost all in, it's in your pocket, but it's about $70,000. So the useful life of the equipment is about 10, or is 10 years, so we factored, um, in for a 10-year repayment, um, just divided evenly for that amount of time. So, but that's essentially what the agreement is.
Very small, well, in compared to what we're using for the rest of the town.
Yeah. And it covers their portable radios, their mobile radios, which are in the vehicle, as well as, you know, all the site work on the towers that's associated with their portion of it, so.
Oh, and I, I think it's great that all those systems are now integrated for lack of a term. I think, I think that's a very good, for the residents.
And you'll remember, we're, uh, using the fire district's existing infrastructure too, which is really neat. So we're sort of all sharing now.
No, and I, again, I know we talked about it extensively around the life of the approval on this, but that, that decision that, that you and Lieutenant Siffel worked on, saved the town almost a million dollars, right? And coming up with that creative solution, um, because if you recall, a couple of years ago, we received, we received some, some presentations on some pretty hefty numbers off of this. So, and 1.2 million certainly is a lot of money, um, but it's, it's a lot less than what it had been, so.
I think it was 2.5.
Yeah, it was. So it's a, it's a pretty, uh, again, I think, innovative effort, um, on your all's part to, to make sure that we're saving money. And then again, you know, integrating all three agencies on the same radio system, same upgrade cycle, same everything, just good for doing business that way. So, all right. Other questions? All right. So I would give. Yeah, thank you for your order. So I'll be looking for a motion, uh, this evening to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance Association regarding the reimbursement of costs associated with the public safety radio system equipment, and authorize Maria, uh, Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the grant.
So moved.
So Wendy, Mike seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Carries four nothing. Thank you all for that. All right. Uh, we are moving on to item F, fiscal 2122, non-union compensation. Yes. All right. So at a recent, uh, personnel subcommittee meeting, uh, Eric, Wendy, and I had the opportunity to discuss this, um, and we felt it was appropriate at the time to bring forward to this body for endorsement or discussion. The, uh, the GWI for the non-union folks, uh, 2.35%, it's in line with, uh, with the contract settlements, and I think an appropriate number. Um, we think, um, Maria has opted to allocate that evenly across, um, the, uh, the, the non-affiliated group that's, uh, in, in common practice or traditional practice with what we've done as long as we pick up an honest board. Um, so we, uh, we appreciate that. Um, I think that's the entirety. All right.
Well, you could, we could add that, you know, it was originally presented as potentially doing it for two years.
Yep.
But as the previous thought, we'll do it for one year, because we don't know what will happen in two years. And we can just prove it worth the next year. This current year, actually. Yeah.
Yeah. But again, no, uh, no concern. I don't think on any of our parts of doing it two years, other than, you know, let's just continue to do it one year. Um, you know, the data that was provided by Maria and, and the rest of the team, um, really makes the decision easy for us. Then again, we can probably use that data again next year as, as we go forward to this, so. Uh, anyone else want to add?
Just, I think I would add that, um, in part of the review, we do both an internal and external salary comparison and analysis. And this was comparable, um, with our dispatchers and ASME group, uh, for the current fiscal year that we're in, 2122.
Um, IBA was slightly, um, slightly higher, um, and then when we looked at our external, um, comparison data for recent negotiated, um, contract settlements, we are seeing in the range of, uh, two and a quarter, so this is, you know, pretty, pretty close on target with what we're seeing earlier during budget development, settlements were coming in more around 2.35, but again, with about, you know, 10% of what we're seeing statewide.
That makes a lot of sense. All right, um, and we should note it's in the motion, but, um, these, uh, GWIs are also subject to a satisfactory performance review, so obviously folks have to be performing at a, an adequate level of, so.
Oh, sorry, just one thing I did forget to mention, um, the health insurance changes, um, we did make for this group, if you recall, to take effect on April 1st. Uh, we were migrating the ASME, you know, which is actually our largest, um, you know, in terms of number of employees that are represented within one group. Um, and we were migrating them on April 1st, so just for administrative ease and some other reasons, um, we did migrate them at that time as opposed to, um, for July 1st.
It's a good mention. And that's important, again, for folk, for folks that are following along at home, um, being consistent across the non-union and union positions, what we're offering from a benefit standpoint is, as you all obviously know, is important, right? Um, and it's important for leadership to be part of that, and again, I applaud the efforts of Maria and team to make sure that, you know, we're treating everybody fairly in town and, and as equally as we have across the different groups, whether you are not, so. I know we strive to be a, a, a top-rated employer, and, and again, these are some of the important things we do to continue that, so. Uh, I will look for a motion this evening to approve a 2.35 general wage increase for unaffiliated staff in non-provisionary status retroactive to July 1st, 2021, pending a satisfactory even performance evaluation and that the salary ranges for those classifications be adjusted accordingly. I'll move that, Mike. Mike?
I'll second it, Wendy.
Wendy seconded, is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that one carries four nothing, thank you. Thank you for your work on that. All right, um, so pending, or we had Jones ringing endorsement on this already, so hopefully this, this one goes, uh, this one goes smoothly, uh. We had the public hearing this evening, obviously, we saw last time, uh, the proposed, uh, changes to the code ordinances, uh, were references to the first select, uh, man or woman, uh, were updated to Town Manager where appropriate. Uh, I think Wendy pointed out an additional item, uh, Bob D was on to, uh, explain, um, uh, and answer any questions we had. Um, so really just an important housekeeping item, as, as, you know, folks think that we, we move to a, a, a Town Manager from the government and that might be it, no. Um, you know, yeah, structurally, yes, 95%, 99%, whatever it is, but there are always items, old policies or other things as we're evolving. Um, and again, I, I applaud Maria and Melissa and team for continuing to look for these items, because these are the things that can hold us up, um, go sideways when it's time to sign a document, um, get something done in the town, and, you know, these are the little things that I think really do make a difference. When we talk about professional management, this is what we need. Um, you know, and we've all been on the inside and, and seen a lot of this stuff, but, you know, not exactly sexy and exciting for the public, I know that, but, you know, these are, these are the reasons why we have professional management to make sure that, that things are being done right and, and the housekeeping items are taken care of, so. Any questions?
Just a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Just like last meeting, um, just to be clear to the public, this is an amendment that's being made.
Correct.
We are not opening the charter. That's it.
Correct.
Thank you.
That's, that's a great clarification, I'll go one step further, so this is the ordinances, and most folks, uh, may not realize, but there's a whole book of ordinances, and we talked about the firefight, um, the, excuse me, the shoveling your fire, uh, hydrant ordinance or the sidewalk ordinance, there's a whole list of ordinances, um, hundreds in my belief. Um, and that, that runs alongside, um, and contributes to the charter, but you're absolutely right, Jackie, this is in no way amending or changing the charter.
Thanks.
So I'll be looking for a motion this evening to adopt a proposed omnibus amendment to the code of warrants as presented, which shall be effective 21 days after publication in a newspaper having circulation within the town of Simsbury. I would further look for a motion to authorize a summary of the adopted ordinance to be published.
So moved, Jackie.
Second, Mike. All right, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, carries four nothing, I would also be looking for a motion this evening to approve the proposed changes to the personnel roles and regulations as presented.
So moved, Jackie. Second Wendy.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, thank you both for those items, or thank you all for both those items, thank you all three of you. Scroll through the code ordinances. Nine hundred pages long. All right, and we are on to Town Manager Goals, uh, July 1st, uh, 2022. So, um, these are largely unchanged, uh, obviously there are some updates here, we, we had a discussion at Personnel. Um, and again, we welcome, um, additional comments, thoughts, questions, clarification. Um, I don't know if you want to just go into a, just a quick highlight, I want your thoughts on it, but, uh, sorry, there's not, there's not a ton, uh, new year for all of us, but obviously something important as, you know, right, you look for this as kind of your guiding document for, there's only so much, uh, there's only so much bandwidth, right, that, that everybody on staff and team can focus, so. Where are the highest priorities is we are the, the voices of the, the taxpayers and the residents, right, and as we work together to try to service those needs, you know, hopefully we should, should encapsulate, um, what the majority of folks, um, think is important in town, uh, to make sure that we're focused on as a team between the Town Manager and the execution arm and for selecting the legislative project, so.
No, thank you, Sean, that's a great segue, um, you know, really, my goals on an annual basis are a bit more organizational focused, where your goals are more policy-oriented, uh, but certainly trying to take into account some of those policy goals that are very important to you all, uh, but then through that also, um, again, sort of working in projects um, for the organization, particularly projects, um, that my office, including myself, um, are oftentimes more directly involved in. Um, so certainly not to say that these are the only projects that, that as an organization we're taking on, uh, throughout the year, but again, more so the projects that, that, you know, my office typically has a higher level of involvement in. Um, but I think it's a, it's a comprehensive list, um, as in the past, I know we've often said that they're aspirational, um, I do like to really look ahead and, uh, try to prepare somewhat an aggressive sort of aspirational list, but I think that this is a good framework for us to work on for the upcoming year.
Questions, comments?
Comments, just, it, it's very similar to what we had proposed at the beginning of the year, I think. Pretty much unchanged.
For projects?
Um. So I saw the addition of supporting the Spirit Council, but most of the goals were.
Oh, sorry, uh, what we do is, um, comments that the personal subcommittee had proposed, um, that were different from what I had submitted. Um, there are a few goals that are sort of, um, consistent in that they're just sort of continually being worked on year after year. Uh, but there were definitely some new goals that were submitted from the previous year, but those, uh, those include are the personal sub, uh, changes, which I thought were very good suggestions.
Yeah, I was gonna, I can just add a couple of things, so just the economic development one, um, I brought up that we would like to see more of a job for economic development there, as opposed to kind of just be reactive, so more proactive, and so that change is needed. Um, and then Eric wanted to include, and, uh, a little bit more, so rather than the high support that, or its vision for a diverse and inclusive community and workforce, there are special projects he wanted to call it the Spirit Council, mostly because of the money that we're spending for the data collection project. So to make more accountability around that, and that's why it was called out separately. Those are really the only big changes in here, and other items that came up, we felt would be more, um, like feedback criteria kind of things, not goals, so.
I agree with that, thank you for that, again, that was exactly what we talked about personnel. Mike, questions?
No, I'm, I'm good, I think all of these goals at all different levels move the town forward, they're consistent with what we've done in the past. More things that come up during the year like the Spirit Council, which I'm absolutely in support of, and I think it's a good thing for us to be doing, so I'm, I'm fine with this.
Yeah, I, again, I'll reiterate just in my closing comments on it, you know, when folks ask what does the town do, right, what does the town focus on, or, you know, besides paving roads and hiring police officers and, and levying taxes and, and, you know, fun stuff we do, this is, this is the stuff that happens in town hall that intertwines all the departments, all of the people. Um, and impacts us, I think all in a meaningful way. Um, you know, there's, there's hot button items on here, there's, there's economic items on here, there's people items on here, workforce are committed to how we treat our staff, how we treat our residents, and, you know, that comes through in things that we do, um, either as a board or in conjunction with the Town Manager. So, again, I think it's really important and, and a good place for us to send folks to, what are you guys do, right, what is the town focused on, what do my tax dollars do, what do I get, respect the road and the sidewalk and other stuff, this is a really, I think, an important and tangible place that I've sent folks to. Like, well, these are some of the priorities that we focus on, and that, that Maria has prioritized for where she spends her time in conjunction with all the other things that are going on, so. I find it extremely valuable.
Well, and then who would even add, Sean, that, that while these are Maria's goals, which end up being the town government goals, they're also part of the things that the board of selection field will make this town and keep it special.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's a great thing to have both short-term and long-term.
I agree. I agree, Mike. All right, so with that, I will look for a motion this evening to adopt the Town Manager Goals July 1st, 2021 to June 30, 2022, as presented this evening.
I'll move that, Wendy.
Move that?
I'll second, Jackie.
Jackie, second, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, it is unanimous, the goals are set. All righty, that concludes the business portion of this evening, uh, we all have the minutes from the, uh, June 28th meeting, any questions, updates? Comments, concerns? Beautifully done, as always. Kathy? If she's listening, aye. All right, those meeting, uh, those minutes will stand, um, all right, now we'll jump to the officially the liaison section, so.
Um, no, I, I'm just joking, so I, I just wanted to mention that Saturday is the Aging and Disability, um, picnic that we're holding, they're holding, um, I think it's at the rink, and I think it's six to eight, and I don't have the exact spec, but it's, it's on social media, it's probably on the Aging and Disability Facebook page, if anyone's interested in attending, um, they, we didn't get to have it last year. And, and that, I missed this last meeting, but the Education Board of Ed has hired Dr. Tyresha Bachelor as the Diversity and Access Director on effective August 9th, so they were very excited to have her start.
Excellent point. If I could just add on to that, I know there's been a lot of discussions on public forums and I'm sure in kitchens and, and uh, living rooms across the, the, the town and obviously the country on, uh, critical race theory and, and what's being taught in school, so. No need to dive into it here because we're board of selection, but, uh, I know the Board of Education, um, has looked at that, I know that um, the Spirit Council, um, is going to be, uh, hosting a discussion, I believe, uh, next month with the Chair of the Board of Education on, um, how the curriculum gets set, um, where folks get feedback from, um, and what is being taught in school, there is, uh, I learned the other, the other night that there's actually, uh, legislation that was passed a few years ago on, um, how race and diversity, um, are currently, um, lawfully being taught in Connecticut at this point. Um, so I know there's a lot out there, I know there's a lot of concern, a lot of questions, uh, a lot of different perspectives, um, I'm not passing any judgment on any of it one way or another, um, other than to hope that folks um, tune into that, um, and understand what's actually happening in town, uh, what the Board of Ed, um, has in terms of process and, and people, um, and that, uh, I think there'll be heartwarming to see that, that folks, uh, um, like all boards and commissions are doing a good job at making sure they're, they're, uh, at looking at all issues and, and, uh, appreciating all perspectives as they, as they lead their groups. Other liaison updates, boards and commissions. Set a quick one, uh, we will be continuing to talk about, uh, the, the ambulance, um, at the public safety level, I know there's, uh, probably been, uh, many questions circulating from my fellow board members, I've gotten emails and from residents on, uh, the level of service being provided, um, I did provide it up here, I think, two meetings ago, uh, that the Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance Association is in compliance with the town contract, um, in terms of their responsiveness. Um, but I, I am aware of the petition that's out there, and again, as the petitioner rightly points out, we're always looking to make sure that we're not just providing service, uh, or providing the best service in town, I do remind folks that, um, the Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance is an independent organization that is not controlled, um, but we can certainly influence, um, and have discussions to make sure, uh, that folks are safe and that they're receiving the service that they expect, um, and are required. Uh, and I know that the Board of Directors for the Simsbury Ambulance and the Executive Directors share that. Um, so I know there's already been a lot of discussions, those discussions, uh, data gathering, information, um, started long before the, the petition that's circulating. Um, but I would expect to see, uh, probably a pretty robust discussion at the next, um, public safety meeting, so if, if folks are interested there, um, we'd welcome, welcome comments, uh, welcome concerns, uh, again, any one of the four of us, obviously, uh, Chris and Eric as well, uh, would welcome any feedback you have or information on that topic, so. And I'll make sure that, um, we're keeping you guys informed so that, uh, everybody knows what's going on, and if there's, um, a need for the, the board to get involved in any way, obviously break up here. Uh, we have a couple of items of communication in the packet, anybody have any questions or would like anything further on those, uh, first being the remote meetings, uh, second being cannabis.
Good to comment on the cannabis, just, I think people should really go out and read what is out there at www.cannabis-dot.gov. Um, there's a lot in there, there's a lot of, um, um, legislative power at the municipal level that will be coming our way in the next year or two. And some towns are already acting on it, you know, very quickly, so I think we need to look at it really thoughtfully, uh, because there could be pros and cons all around, so.
Yes, definitely, definitely, um, and Bob is working out, preparing an overview for us in terms of the impact it will have on, on our community, our organization. Um, and at this point in time, I know he's recommending that we perhaps pursue this via ordinance as opposed to fulfillment use regulations. Uh, so we're to come on that, um, we are, we are working on this for you.
Great.
But you're thinking again that that may be a more, um, sort of appropriate way to, to handle the use as opposed to fulfillment use rights.
I put that question for you, Maria, um, by doing an ordinance that allows us to much more quickly respond to changing state regulations, is, is that correct?
Right, so, um, and, and we could definitely, um, I can invite, you know, Bob to, to speak to this more, and if you want to have sort of a more in-depth conversation, we could add it to the agenda, but essentially, an ordinance does, I think, allow us to be a bit more nimble and respond more quickly. Oftentimes, when you try to do enforcement, um, through the land, to start, I said, both you and Jackie are aware of your time serving on land agencies, it is through statute, just a more sort of cumbersome and lengthy process, um, than when you're regulating through an ordinance, I, I do think that would be an advantage for sure.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Should be, excited for that. All right. Other questions? Topics? Communication, all right, we, uh, we are adjourned to executive session, correct? All right, so I'll need a motion to adjourn, adjourn to executive session, pursuant to Connecticut General Statute. One dash 260, um, with, uh, Maria Capriola, Bob DiCresceno, and Melissa Appleby.
I'll make that motion.
All right.
I'll second.
Wendy seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed, all right, well, we are entering, all right, we are back live, um, for those of you that stuck with us, thank you. So I'll need a motion this evening to amend the agenda, uh, to consider, uh, updating the consideration, uh, uh, for, uh, release for the Powder, is it Powder Forest? Just Powder Forest homes, so I'll need a motion, uh, to add that to the agenda, I'll move that. All right, so Mike moved it, Jackie seconded, uh, any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, so, uh, that is added to the agenda, uh, so just to update everybody, um, a, a little quick history here, there was a decision, uh, by a prior Board of Selection in 2012 um, to remove, uh, the, the deed restrictions, um, on eight homes, uh, for the homes at Powder Forest. Um, and there was a consideration, uh, applied for the removal at the time we're here this evening to just update that consideration uh, in, uh, to, to reflect, um, what, what's appropriate, uh, this, uh, removal has been, uh, approved previously, uh, by a Board of Selection and two, uh, zoning commissions. Recently, again, as, uh, here, I believe, um, and we have Attorney D Crescendo here has been advising us on that. Um, so any questions or, or updates from the folks before I give a, a motion here? Okay, Bob, keep me honest on this, I, I did write it down, but, uh, I'll be looking for a motion to, uh, set the consideration, um, in exchange, uh, uh, for removal of the previously uh, approved releases not to exceed $100 and, uh, to authorize the Town Manager, uh, to execute, um, uh, uh, removal of, of, uh, I messed that one up, authorize the Town Manager to accept, uh, those, uh, that nominal fee not to exceed $100 in exchange, uh, for execution of the previously approved release. in exchange, uh, for execution of the previously approved releases.
So moved. Second Wendy.
Wendy, got that right, Bob, for the record?
Yes.
All right, uh, I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Thank you all. Bob, thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Uh, so, uh, Jackie gave the motion, and then Wendy seconded the motion, and then it was, uh, 4-0 in favor. Yep, and then I will entertain a motion to adjourn this evening.
I'll move that.
Wendy moves?
Jackie seconded.
Jackie seconds. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.